They go out to the suburbs where my brother lives. And they get a little creeped out, it's so quiet.
Ah, here we are. Hello, everyone, welcome to an episode of Fallon's Daily Toast. We're at Somerville Media Center, it's a beautiful fall evening. And on this evening's show is filmmaker, movie critic, musician, member in the Screen Actors Guild, Tim Jackson. Thank you so much for being on the show.
A pleasure.
A pleasure, indeed.
We met?
Yes, we met.
The other day at the farmer's market.
We did, it was just the other day, we were doing, SMC has opened the doors to people that want to come in and talk about what freedom of speech means to them. So I happened to go out, it was my turn to go out and see who I could wrangle in, and it was Tim and his wife Suzanne. And so they came in and recorded in that little, you know, that moment of passing. He mentioned this, and you know, what he was a part of, and I said, "Let's meet and talk, maybe we can have you on the show." And here you are. It happens like that, but you're not new to SCATV, now known as SMC. This isn't your first time.
No, no, when I first moved here to Somerville, which was 33 years ago.
Thirty-three years ago.
Yeah, and I had just started a band, my kids were little, and I had traveled a lot as a musician, and I wanted to stay in town, so I had an idea for a band. I had a name, and the name was The Band That Time Forgot. And I thought, "What can I do with that name?" And the only, the only band that did any kind of tribute or old stuff was Sha Na Na, who did 50s, and I thought, "Well, why isn't anybody doing 60s?" Because I know that music, I grew up playing that music, and the best musicians I know could play that stuff, circles around that stuff and play it better than it was done. So I started that band. And we got a Best of Boston Award within two years from Boston Magazine, and then I thought, "Well, I should get onto the local cable access station and make a show called The Show That Time Forgot." So it was pretty primitive here back then, and they had all kinds of, you know, special effects things that were really, you know, I guess state-of-the-art for back then.
And fun to use. I watched an episode recently, and I was pretty impressed with the, yeah, The Time, and what they had to offer for special effects, and lots of beep-boops, and you know, like funny little--
And field work.
--computer imagery, field work, yeah, really.
So I went into Harvard Square and asked, you know, kids what they thought of the 60s. And so this is three decades ago, asking them what they thought of the 60s. And so, you know, all those kids are middle-aged now. When I think of how old that show is, it's pretty surprising.
Yeah.
And I did a thing, before there was even Eddie Murphy, I did a piece with Berrence Whitfield.
Berrence Whitfield?
Yeah, he's, people might know Berrence Whitfield, Berrence Whitfield and the Savages, he's a great, great singer, black singer. And he wanted to do an improv, and he wanted to get up there and just rail against white people. So I put the camera back and just slowly zoomed in on Berrence as he did this improv hour. "I hate white people, I won't even eat vanilla ice cream, I won't travel in no white limousine." And he would just, "Ooh, it'd make me so mad." And he just went into this incredible improv, and then the camera pulled back, and then he goes, he just starts bopping like, and I put that on the show, and people go, "Yeah, that's not funny."
Oh.
"That race thing is not funny." But then, a couple of years later, Eddie Murphy's doing it all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
So I thought, "Okay, Berrence was on the cutting edge there." And he also happens to be the nicest guy in the world. So it was a really fun show, and it was--
And that there is freedom of speech.
It was maybe a little bit strange for the times, I think, yeah.
Sure, or, you know, ahead of his time.
Possibly. Yeah, I mean, Edie Sedwick, I don't know if you've heard of Edie Sedwick, who were the Warhol, she did a Sesame Street with Edie Sedwick, was this woman, Joanne Sapola, and she was counting numbers. "I have one pill, and two pills, and then I'm going to try eating them all," and she passes out on the show, like a Sesame Street, so it was a sort of Sesame Drug segment.
Very sociopolitical.
Yeah.
Touching on the times, I imagine, there was a lot of overdoses happening even then.
It wasn't a scat blockbuster.
No, of course not. Now, so The Band That Time Forgot, now you were also the drummer in Robin Lane and the Chartbusters--
Right.
--which I just discovered aired the first, like, LA, people from LA that were working at MTV back in the, what, early 80s?
Yep.
They talk about that, were you one of the first MTV music videos?
Yeah, well, we were on Warner Brothers Records, so they sent two filmmakers to Boston to say, "We're gonna make a music video with you," and we were going, "What's a music video?" And they said, "Well, we're gonna use it for promotion, and we're not really sure." So these two filmmakers come in, and they said, "What are you gonna do exactly?" And they said, "Well, we'll do one lip syncing in front of a blue screen, and then we're gonna do another one, a conceptual video. And we're trying to figure out what to do, but we'd like that Boston's on the ocean, so we're gonna dress you up as sailors, and Robin will go off, her boyfriend is going off to sea as she sings her song." And it's, it's so goofy.
It is goofy, yeah.
It's just, you know, they didn't have that kinetic, fast-cut edge that videos, that MTV eventually evolved to. But it was the 11th video on MTV, and we didn't really even know it at the time. And the one with the blue screen?
Yeah, I love that one. That's like, she, Robin Lane is just a rock star.
Yeah, well, she's a great, great, great singer.
Such a great singer, wow.
But the blue screen, they never put anything in the blue screen, so years later, I had made a movie when I was 10 years old, called The End of the World, where I hired all the little neighborhood kids to play mutants, and I mowed them down with machine guns, and the world had ended, and I blew up a toy city, and it was like, all these horrible things going on, and all these little kids. I put that in the blue screen. So, so we're playing this like, song about Sid Vicious from The Sex Pistols murdering his girlfriend, and in the background are all these little kids, like, whipping and shooting each other, and it was a movie that I'd made on 8-millimeter tape in like, 1963.
Wow.
The stories go on like that, you know?
Beautiful, yeah, stories do go on. So that was a career, like, you, you know, picked up by Warner, drummer, traveled around the world with Robin Lane and the Chartbusters, and then, when did you decide to get into film?
Well, you know, I had worked with Tom Rush, the folk singer--
Yeah.
--for a while, and then Robin, and another group that was fantastic, and, and I was with this group called The Young Rationals, I made, we made a couple of music videos, and I directed one. But I realized that you needed youth, management, an image, marketing, time, poverty, a lot of things to really continue a career in music. And I just, there were other things I wanted to do. So I started The Band That Time Forgot so that I could branch out, go back into acting, which was where I had started. And, and all I'd ever really, my main love was always film. So I started writing a little bit for The Real Paper in Providence. And then I kept passing a billboard that said, you know, "Go back for your master's degree at Cambridge College." I hadn't, I had dropped out, so I went back, finished my bachelor's in English, so I could learn to read and write again. And then got my masters, and then lucked out and had a teaching job for 20 years, which supported the acting, and the music, and the writing, and everything else. So it just, you know, the cards shuffled right.
And at what point did you decide that you wanted to do the film about Robin Lane? That was When Things Go Wrong.
Oh, When Things Go Wrong, well, that's--
We have a clip of also, if we, we wanted to share that with the audience.
Oh, yeah, there's an old trailer that I put some things--
An old trailer?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's not, was never really made into a trailer, but I put some things onto it, so people can see what it sort of is.
We can play that.
Oh, yeah, if you want to play that.
So Robin Lane is, yeah, rock star, I mean, she just, you know, y'all were like, pretty amazing, like, popular.
Well, yeah, she was, she's just a gifted songwriter and singer, and she was incredibly beautiful and an amazing performer, she had it all. And I couldn't figure out why she never really went on to fame and fortune the way a lot of women did, because she was one of the pioneers for women fronting a rock band, really. She was one of the first.
She was.
And, you showing it right now?
Yeah, showing it right now. There we go, wow. Beautiful.
So that's the, When Things Go Wrong, film.com.
Yes.
You can buy DVDs of the film.
Yeah, and what do you, and I love that it is, you know, at that time, there was, what, Robin Lane and Amy Mann?
There was Amy Mann, we got, I think, I always heard we were assigned to Warner Brothers because there was Pat Benatar, Chrissy Hynde of The Pretenders, and Robin. And they wanted those to be the three main women to start promoting, fronting rock bands. Pat Benatar's husband was the guitar player, Neil Giraldo, and she did really well. And Chrissy Hynde's a maniac, and she was fantastic, and had a hard rocking band. Robin was always unsure of what her image was, and in the story, she has a baby and they drop her contract, that's the end of it. Amy Mann is sort of an anomaly, she, we were definitely playing shows with Till Tuesday, her first band, all the time. Amy was always kind of, not really snobby, but floated above everything. She really knew what she wanted, she was good, she had style, image, she was destined to do great things. And Robin should have been, but, you know, it didn't work out, so I thought she just deserved a story, her story to be told, and I had wanted to make a feminist movie, a feminist rock biography, because it's also male-centered. Obama had just become president, and I, I can't help but be political, and some people don't like it when I do that, but it was because I, Bush was just such a monster. Politics always lead what I decided to do, and I needed, to show that the culture needed to be feminized, need to tell women's stories. And all those were reasons why I went at it.
That's beautiful. Yeah, I love, Patch Adams says, "What we need is a grandmother revolution," you know, just the, the rising of the femme. And so, so in this, so Robin, she really just, is it just, you know, she kind of goes through and talks about some of the trials and tribulations of what it was like?
It's a complex story. I mean, it goes from the 60s, where there was a lot of LSD, and a lot of male-centered music business. And when she comes to Boston, she had actually committed herself to, what do you, a nut house, whatever you want to call it--
Sure.
--for a while, put herself away for a while, and then found Jesus. So when she came to Boston, she was a born-again Christian.
Hallelujah.
But none of us in the band are even close to that, so, but that didn't bother her, because she didn't proselytize it, it just, she just used it as comfort and inspiration. So a lot of her songs, people didn't realize, when she was writing them, she was writing them to a higher power, not to another man. And, and I think she still believes, but because Christianity has gotten so pervert, perverted, I think, in some ways.
Yeah, because there's been a lack of, like, proper accountability, a lot of, you know, people got away with a lot, and they were never held accountable, and so there was no atonement, and, well, and so that's unfortunate, because I think that it helps a lot of people to have faith in something greater than them, which is--
Yeah.
--you know, whether it's great organic design, God, Allah, Jesus, Mary, you know--
Right.
--a cow.
And I, and I get that, myself not being a believer at all, but, but it did, it did get Robin through that period, but that, combined with the fact that she had started as a sort of folk artist in Los Angeles, where she was, she had lived with Neil Young for a while, she had written music with Andy Summers of The Police when she was married to him. And she seemed to be morphing into whatever was happening at the time, so we were in the punk scene, but we were never really punks, and people resented that pretense. And I think it was just a combination of things like that, that, you know, but she's still writing, she's doing--
She is writing.
--songwriting workshops with Women Survivors of Trauma--
Yeah.
--and an organization called Songbird Shings, and she'll probably be on your show.
Yes, I'm really planning on getting in touch with her, I'm excited to meet her in person, I'm such a big fan, and just these last few days, I've been, had the pleasure of diving into Tim Jackson's, like, career, and all of that he's done, and it's quite a collection, an archive, and so, I want to talk about the gurning.
Oh, the gurning.
For those that don't know at home what gurning is, could you fill them in?
The gurning was just sort of a fluke, I had done Robin's thing, and I had done another one on subversive street artists and pranksters.
Yes, Radical Jesters, which I watched some today, that one with Michael Jackson, that whole--
Amazing.
--amazing.
Amazing, yeah. You can go to radicaljesters.com, and you can see 11 profiles of people like Milan Kahoot, who's a performance artist from Czech Republic, who lives here in Boston, and--
It's so good.
John Hargrave, who did the prank with Michael Jackson prank. These are amazing things. I wanted art students to misbehave, because Bush had just become president.
Yeah.
And I thought, I wanted something a little edgy, and I had just done one in the American Repertory Theater, and that was to sort of say, you know, theater needs to be more vital, needs to be more about conversation, about understanding who we are, and less singing, "Ah, the Phantom of the Opera" kind of stuff, because I just don't care about that. Anyway, so, then I finished Robin's, and that took five years, a lot of work, and I wanted to do something where I was in it. And I'd always wanted to go to the gurning competitions in England, and the gurning competitions in England have been going for 750 years, to see who can contort the world's ugliest face. And they put their head through a braffin, or horse collar, it's called a gurning through a braffin. And they put the very, and they make these hideous faces, and they, some of them take their teeth out and put them down here, and just jut them forward, if they don't have any teeth, they suck in their nose. You've seen these pictures.
Oh, yeah.
But I wanted to go, and I wanted to compete. So a friend of mine, who I was in another band with, called The Young Rationals, fellow named Steve Stone, great band, with Sheldon Mirowitz, who's the head of the Boston, the Berklee Silent Film Orchestra, and Richard Gates, who's a great bass player, plays with everybody in town. That was a killer band, and we made videos, and Steve owns a video company now, and he said, "I'll go with you to England." And I said, "Wait a minute, you'll go with me with cameras and everything? I was just gonna shoot this however I could pull it off." And he said, "Yes." His wife said, "She'll go too." A photographer came down from the Netherlands, my wife went with us, and I rode ahead and worked it all out, competed, and shot a 15-minute short documentary called The American Gurner. And all of a sudden, there I was, interviewing the 15-time world champion, who makes a really hideous face--
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
--and all these oddballs, and then, there I am on stage, about to make the ugliest face I can, having been coached by the champion, and I'm thinking, "I just traveled 3,500 miles and spent all this money, and all these people are over here, and I'm gonna be on stage for five minutes making an ugly face, what am I doing?"
Making the ugliest face.
But the result is, I have this movie that's pretty funny.
It is pretty funny, we have a trailer we can show.
Oh, you want to show the trailer?
Yeah, yeah, let's show the trailer.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty clear about what it is.
Yeah, this is great. Yeah, I'm pretty impressed by some of the way people can contort their faces.
Oh, it is really disturbing.
I actually was inspired to practice, so maybe I'll make my way there someday. Thank you for the inspiration.
Yes, it's not always the most appetizing. Steve Stone put this trailer together, it's pretty good.
I'm gonna say hello, good morning, to Tim, who's standing in front of me, who hasn't got an ugly or a very grotesque face either. Tim, good morning.
Good morning, Val, how are you?
I'm fine, but word has it that you're taking part in the gurning championships later on.
Uh, yeah, I'm really gonna give it a shot.
Go for it, Tim. You see, I'm just surprised you're married.
Well, so am I. Oh, I like that. Ooh, now that is not bad.
That's very good.
You will not get anywhere with that. I'm gonna move that face anyway, so, nothing to do with it, Tim.
No, no, you were right.
Tommy, determined to see off you as pretender to gurning crown, he wants my title, we'll see about that.
Tim Jackson, from Boston, Massachusetts. The world's gurning champion is--
Well, I'll tell you one thing, I don't like being the center of attention.
Oh.
That's great. So people can tune into that, they can--
You can just see that online.
You can just see that online, that's, that's pretty hilarious. And did you make, did you win, like, did you get a prize, or did you make it into the top--
No, no, you know, surprisingly, I think that unless you're, you already have celebrity status, or people know who you are, that kind of story doesn't work. I wanted to do a first-person documentary, I wanted to do something where I was the character, and, and that's what I did, and it's the film I wanted to make, but it didn't get as much reception as I thought it would. Played the Independent Film Festival of Boston. If you know me, you like the movie. If you don't know who that guy is at all, maybe it doesn't work as well.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, so, but you live and learn.
Yeah, I know, and, and so more so, like, so here's you starring as, you know, you're just you, and you're traveling, and, but as far as your acting career goes--
Yeah.
--what kind of things have you been in, or what have you, you know, you're part of the Screen Actors Guild.
Well, when I think of actors in Boston, I don't, I hardly even consider that I had a career, it's just, it's, it's my first love, and I've done it my whole life, and, you know, I'm always taking workshops, and I've done industrials, and TV shows, and extra work, and things like that. So I just keep at it, and at one point after college, when I had been studying drama, I, I had to decide, "Do I play rock and roll, or do I act?" And, you know, when you're young and frisky, rock and roll is the thing to do. Also, you have to get good on your instrument early, so you get a reputation, and you get that under your belt, and I always thought, "I can go back to acting when I'm old and funny-looking." And, and that's what's worked out pretty well, you know? There's just not, there's not a lot of work here, and it's hard to develop a career, but I'll act, you know, for a cup of coffee. I mean, I am in the Screen Actors Guild, so you have to--
Good to know, because I've got something up my sleeve, so, I'll buy you a cup of coffee.
Yeah. Anybody out there want an actor, I'm game. Because I just, I just love to do it, it really, I really admire actors, so, when I think career, I think, you know, somebody like, you know, Paula Plumb, who's a friend of mine, who's a magnificent actress, and I think it's just an incredible thing. I did get a part in a movie recently.
Yes, it's playing at the Toronto Film Festival right now, called Chappaquiddick.
Yeah, Chappaquiddick will be coming out, and, and I think I really got it because I could look like the father of the victim of Ted Kennedy's accident at Chappaquiddick, which is Mary Jo Kopecky, so I played Joe Kopecky. And it's not much of a part, you know, I have some lines here and there, and I have a tragic scene where I'm watching Ted Kennedy apologize on TV. So it was a lot of fun, it was a movie moment for me, but it's not like it leads to something else. Well, maybe somebody will see it and say, "We like that face of tragedy."
Yeah.
"We want that guy," you never know.
You never do know.
So you keep doing it, you keep doing it.
Yeah, and we were discussing Chappaquiddick, and how at that point--
Yeah.
--Ted Kennedy had lost both of his brothers.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was just, yeah, such a tragic, tragic thing.
Yeah, having read the script, and I'm really not supposed to talk about how this, the take on the script, but you can read Joan Didion's short novel called Black Water, and it really says that he was culpable for more than just a slap on the wrist. But on the other hand, our heroes, the Kennedys, you know, Ted Kennedy did a lot of good work, sort of to make up for the indiscretion of his, that situation. Yeah, it's complicated, it's complicated. The movie, I'm not sure what the reception will be like.
Yeah, no, I'm looking for it.
I don't even know, you know, how much I'll be in it, but I can't wait to see.
Me too, me too. And so another thing, we were just, we were talking, you know, when we met recently, and he brought up this woman, Joan Walsh England, and he, you know, she's currently working, launching a Kickstarter, coming soon, will be the Kickstarter to launch this short film about this beautiful, talented children's book writer and illustrator. And I looked up on the website, and I, I just remember, like, you know, as soon as I saw this image of these, you know, two little, like, kid characters, and it just immediately was like, "My nana had these little characters and figurines on her knick-knack shelf, and I loved them."
Yeah.
And so, to now have this understanding of who it was that created it, Joan Walsh England, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, she, I've known her my whole life, and--
Yeah, she's 91, 92 now?
She's 92 now, yeah. 91, she'll be 92 in January. And I had, I actually had dated her daughter in high school, and we've remained really, really good friends, and, and now she has a daughter, and her great-grandchildren, and her granddaughter, and they're all really close, it's a, it's a nest of women. And, and Joan has been a big influence on my life, I used to go over there every Christmas Eve with her and her husband, who was a Broadway, off-Broadway playwright, comedian, actor, one of the funniest people I've ever met in my life. And he was short, and bald, and funny, and bearded, and she's tall, and blonde, and quiet, and genteel, and they were just, you know, we'd drink champagne every Christmas, and so, I met her one day recently, and she said, you know, she wanted to put something down, and she had seen the Robin Lane movie. And I think I made a connection, and I thought I should do something about her that's more than the books, because she's got some stories to tell. And she's also one of the most genuine people I've ever met, and when my cameraman and people work on the movie and they meet her, they're, and even Robin has met her and wrote a song for the movie, they're just completely bowled over by her presence. She's just such a powerhouse, such a peaceful, spiritual presence somehow. So, I did some interviews with her, where she tells these stories about her life, and it's gonna be blended with the images, because people really want to see the images of what she's done, and, and her poetry, because she's been writing poetry her whole life. She says she trans, gets up in the middle of the night and transcribes the poem. They seem to just come to her. I remember I was doing a shot on Nantucket with her this summer, and they said, "Okay, just, you know, just stand there, we're just gonna keep doing some shots," and she's 91. And she sat there just looking at the horizon, and wrote this beautiful poem while she was standing there. So those poems will be read, the images, the stories, and then the poems will be read by Paula Plumb, who is, you know, one of Boston's great actresses. And, yeah, and music by John Cusiak, who does Earl Morris's music, he's gonna be doing some music, Robin will do some music, my son Maxwell, who's a musician, may also do some of the music for it. So it's a collaboration of different things, you'll see, I'm still working on it, but there'll be a Kickstarter campaign.
Yeah, and we'd love to, to know when you launch it, so--
Yeah, probably towards the end of this month.
Yeah, it'd be nice to even have Joan in, and have maybe you, Joan, and a few others, whoever might have wanted to--
Because there's gonna be animation, I need to pay an animator, I need to pay my editor--
Yes.
--Enver Perez, if you're out there listening to this, Enver is, everybody wants Enver, he's enormously talented editor, and my right-hand guy for, we just work like this.
Yeah.
Love a good editor, so, that's next.
So important, we have a little trailer we can show.
Yeah, it's a little piece of--
It's a little piece.
--the very beginning of the film--
Yeah.
--that will be part of the Kickstarter trailer.
There we go.
I was looking out the window, and I thought, "In each one of those windows, there could be a friend." And I looked out the window, and there was one little patch of green, and, and there was a little house, but everything else was buildings. And there was one little boy, and he was playing under one little tree. And I thought, "Oh, that could be a friend." So then, I shifted from not having a friend, and feeling alone, and everything else, and realized that you have to find your friend. And, and it can be a boy, or a girl, or a cat, or a dog, or even a white mouse, or it can be a tree that lets you climb it easily, and all of that. And then at the end, it's, some people have lots and lots of friends, and some people have quite a few friends, but everyone, everyone in the whole world has at least one friend. Where did you find her?
Oh, that's lovely. That's the first time I'm seeing her, too.
Oh, that's one of her first books.
Yeah.
And they're all have this kind of ingenuous innocence to them, which really sticks with people who grew up with her books. And, and all of her work is at the Archives Library at BU, so I have access to everything. It's all in one place, they cleared out her studio, and she was, you know, not really drawing on much anymore, and, so it's all there, including these poems that have never been published. So with the Kickstarter campaign, I've put together-- So with the Kickstarter campaign, I've put together bookmarks and refrigerator magnets and postcards and things with the original poems and, and the illustrations that come from the Archives as incentives to contribute some money. And she's got a huge fan base.
I imagine she's still selling a lot of little books.
Yeah, she does. And it's funny because, you know, money is not a thing that even exudes off of her. They, they live so simply, so she's a pretty amazing person. And, and, you know, politically again, I think that in these times where we have a president who's really unfit for the office, there's no solution to that. All we can do is just endure day after day, the travesties of, to the democracy. And we have to come back on ourselves and we have to do good work ourselves. And we have to, you know, do community work. We have to know, you know, a life, a life well-lived is the best revenge or something like that, you know, to paraphrase. That's, that's what I think it is about now.
Yeah, I know.
It's returning it to, to communal responsibility and individual satisfaction. Do, do things that mean something to you. And I, and I gotta say, I've been with my wife for decades, you know, and we've always lived like that. We do the things that mean something to us. Money is not the thing. And sometimes that's hard. But in the end, as an older person, I'll tell you, it pays off to know that you've done the things that mean something to you. And keep trying new things. We've reinvented ourselves so many times.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Keep it up, right? I know, that's, and speaking of politics, you being so upset, yeah, with the current administration that you went online, can you talk a little bit about the latest?
Oh, thanks, yeah.
For those at home that want to know exactly how bad.
I forgot about.
The president.
Right. Well, you know, Trump was elected and I just watched an American Horror Story called The Cult or something, where they turned the Trump election into a horror show, like, oh my God, what are we going to do? This has become just inconceivable. Sorry, Trump supporters, but I have no patience for that at all. And, and I was driving home one day and I thought, our idiot president, how are we going to get through this? I wonder who owns that domain name, ouridiotpresident.com? And I looked online, nobody owned it. You gotta be kidding. Nobody. So I went on and I went to godaddy.com or wherever you go to buy a domain name, and I bought the domain name, ouridiotpresident.com. And I started filling it with all the early stories of Trump's narcissism, bad decisions, poor hiring choices, you know, Betsy DeVos, Deval.
Deval.
You know, just this sort of mind-boggling, endless parade of nonsense that goes on. So it's really, I can't keep up with it, but it's sort of become an archive. But it also has a page for videos, because some very good videos have been made of parodies and Mexico has been making them. Other countries have been sending things in. Having traveled a lot in the last couple of years, the whole world is aghast. They just, they're beside themselves. They can't believe this has happened to our country. And, and so they're making videos and there's art from all over the world, people making art in protest about this monster. And the art is hysterical, I've got to say.
I truly do just, you know, I don't know, the art is hysterical and, yeah, I mean, and that's sort of the remedy for many to, to try to understand and create some semblance of sanity with the insanity that it is of having someone like this as our president.
And also, every day I get up and there's more posts on Facebook about what he's done here, what he's done there. You can't get up every morning, there's just some new nightmare. So I thought, well, I don't want to do that. Let me just conglomerate all of these things on a website. So when people send things, I, I put them up, I put them up. So it's just sort of my way of venting, I guess. But it also becomes, do we remember what he said with the Boy Scouts? Do we remember what he did on, you know, talking about the Holocaust? Do we remember that he did this? I mean, the line of atrocities is so long, we start to forget. And on this site, hopefully it's all, will stay there.
Good, it's all there. Thank you for doing that work and compiling all of that, because I think it's important that we do not normalize or forget this, yeah, this just terrible, like terrifying reality that exists today, that Donald Trump is our president. And he's a great weapon of mass distraction, if that's sort of the role that he's been playing, is to just be this talking head while all these other things go on behind closed doors, and sort of seems to be the case. But just keep doing your work, as you said, keep getting together with community, you know. So cheers to the radical jesters.
Cheers to the radical jesters, yeah. I mean, he's always holding up one more shiny object. Okay, now we're going to deport, now we're going to do this. Forget about Russia, forget it. Look at this, look at this, look at this, you know. To me, it's beyond politics. It's, it's about his mental state. And it always was. And so.
And that's unfortunate, because there is shame. Then, so we've now like shame him for having this mental disability widely, that he's enough that he's a president. But, you know, and then talk about the mental health issues of everyone in this country and how they're, they're not addressed appropriately. They're cast aside or ashamed or, you know, not enough funding. And it's really, it's, it's a tragedy. So I'm hoping to see, yeah, legislator, we've got a lot of really great people that are running, you know, running for office and that are like amped up and excited and have, that are going to breathe new life. Stuff starts on the local level, you know? Your voice does matter.
We're fortunate to live here, too.
We are so fortunate to live here. I'd love to take a trip maybe, you know, once a year, more than once a year, you know, but to be able to afford it. Take like three and four busloads of people, just travel along the country to the like, you know, toxic groups, get together with community centers, like what is everyone struggling, suffering? Cause that's what, you know, everyone has in common. No one has, you know, there is a clear class war happening, but, but.
They're trying to amp that up, too.
Yeah, I know.
There's such good people everywhere. And even if they voted for Trump, they're, they're probably decent people, they're just scared.
Yeah, they are, because they're just trying to survive, right?
A fix, yeah. Anything for a fix. I mean, I read Hillbilly Elegy, this book now about, you know, people in Appalachia and why they go to Trump, their family situations, social conditions and things like that. Just trying to, you know, get a handle on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All we can do is get a handle on it.
Yep.
So you've got all sorts of stuff you're working on currently, including, you're also a critic for Arts Fuse.
Oh, yes, I should push Arts Fuse.
Yeah, Arts Fuse is really something, really pretty amazing, actually. I did a little bit of poking around.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's Bill Marx, who used to write theater criticism for the Boston Globe, 10 years ago started the Arts Fuse. And there's really interesting writers there, people who are practitioners, people who are good writers, people who are readers, people who are actors, filmmakers. When The Phoenix folded, Betsy Sherman, Gerald Perry came on board the Arts Fuse, writing film criticism. So now I'm, gotta up my game, because they're really good. But Bill Marx, you know, fortunately let me come in as a, one of the early film people. But there's, all the arts are covered in the Arts Fuse independently. So he doesn't say what you can and can't do. So it can be controversial, you can cover, I cover mostly independent. And there are art listings every week in the Arts Fuse. And I think it's the best listings you can find, if you really care about this. I mean, I know that a lot of people don't care about the arts, they'd rather stay home and watch, get something on their box, one, some kind of box or other. But if you go out and you see music and you see theater and you read books and.
There's so much culture.
You do communal things with the arts, you go to museums. The listings in the Arts Fuse will really help direct you to places where interesting things are happening. And I, I love the magazine, the online magazine for doing that.
Yeah.
Plus, the things that get reviewed are generally not the blockbusters. They, you know, we know why the blockbusters are out there. They've got big effects and they're great escapes.
Sure.
But who are we as human beings? That's what art needs to do. So if I proselytize anything, it's that. Art is going to be our salvation.
Oh, I love that.
And I think that Arts Fuse is helping direct attention.
Yes, Arts Fuse, they're having, there's some sort of an event happening at Warehouse coming up.
Right.
That I'll get to attend and meet more people from Arts Fuse. I'd love to maybe have them on once a month to talk about upcoming.
Yeah, yeah. I'll get Bill Marx on here.
Get Bill Marx on here to talk a little bit about what's upcoming. That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's been, you know, after acting and filmmaking and teaching and music and blah, 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 writing is the hardest thing, the hardest thing, you know. But it's, it's, it's really rewarding. And I can sit still, I don't have to go anywhere to do it.
Exactly.
And I don't go deaf.
Right, right.
You know, years playing the drums is, takes its toll.
And you're still playing.
Yeah, yeah, still playing.
Yeah.
Yep.
When's the band The Time Forgot, have they got, have any upcoming?
No, we don't. You know, when we played the Last Days of Johnny Dees, I managed to book The Band The Time Forgot and Robin Lane and The Chartbusters' last gig.
What?
At Johnny Dees. And both of those were sold out. And that was Johnny Dees' swan song. But now we don't, you know, Band The Time Forgot has been playing so long, we really don't look for work. So we play parties when people call. There's a club out there that wants to, you know, pay us to play, but we're not very aggressive about booking ourselves. And theoretically, The Chartbusters are not even together anymore, although I still work with Robin once in a while. And with Asa Bremner, over at Sally O's.
Oh, Asa, yeah. That's funny. Asa Bremner, there's a connection to Bethlehem. I'm wearing a Bethlehem Skateboard Park project. He and his family lived up in Bethlehem and he actually sold a great deal of his, many of his books to Barbara Thompson up there at Ragamuffins. And so, yeah, I was in charge of cataloging, so I happened to go through some of Asa's parents' books and, yeah, it was pretty cool up in Bethlehem, New Hampshire.
Yeah, he's got a whole barn there filled with books.
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of training.
He's king of the yard sale, Asa. You know, he's got stuff from everywhere and he's got books coming out every.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got a, you know, acreage up on, in New Hampshire. And there's a barn filled with books, yeah.
Well, I am so pleased to have had you on the show. I'm so glad that it worked out.
It's fun, yeah.
And let's, let this, make this happen again.
Sure, love to.
Coming up next, so we have 15 minutes left. And Ben Ewen Kempin is going to be coming in in just about a minute or two. He should be out there in the, in the waiting area. And Ben is Somerville's, a candidate for Somerville's Ward Three Alderman. And so election season is on us and Election Day is November 7th. So get to know your candidates. It's a really exciting time, lots of new people emerging and just people sort of reacting to some of the laws and just rules and things that are being imposed or lifted or, Ben, I mean, cause you know, we're getting hit left and right here. Lots of shock and awe, so.
And big changes in Somerville, too.
And big changes in Somerville, too, yeah. There's a lot of big changes happening. I mean, this place for many years, as you said, was called like Slumerville, was it called?
Slumerville.
Slumerville. And because it was just, yeah, I mean, it wasn't very built up. I mean, there wasn't, I mean, what was slum about it? What was, is it, could you talk of, why do you think they called it Slumerville?
Well, it was a little, it was very working-class. Not that that's a bad thing, but it was tough.
Still working-class.
It was tough. It was dirty, it was crowded, the zoning was corrupt.
Okay.
I mean, I gotta say, they were building places where they shouldn't have built. I love Mike Capuano, but I'm not sure what happened to all, you know, Mayor Bruen before that.
Yeah.
They were building things where they shouldn't have been building things, mixing, you know, types of structures. So it was chaotic. It was chaotic. It's also incredibly dense.
Yeah, it is.
And it's hard to get around. So you have Cambridge, which is all green and universities and blah, 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 you know, and then you have Somerville, right there, tough, crowded, working-class, you know, long history of.
Lots of old landfills.
Oh, landfills all over the place. And, you know, my old neighbors, when I moved there, they were wonderful. And they would tell me the history and they'd say, ah, you know, we used to play it out at a pack, it used to flood the pack, we'd, we'd skate at the pack, now they're building this freaking school, there's got to be traffic. Ah, this whole place is changing, I don't know, you know? And they just go on and on, you know?
Sure.
And.
And how quickly it does.
My favorite neighbor would come down and I'd say, wow, beautiful fall leaves. He'd look at the ground, all the leaves on his side and go, eh, effing leaves. Okay, welcome to autumn in Somerville. So that's what it was like.
Those fallen leaves and they get wet.
Yeah.
You can take you for a little top right on your bum.
But I didn't notice the change. It's funny, because I didn't really, I liked living in a, in a working-class neighborhood. It was so colorful and so much, and so interesting. And gradually, we, what they called Cambridge types, just meant people who had maybe more education or were progressively, you know, politically progressive, although there was a lot of Democrats in Somerville always, moved in, started, started to change. And then everybody said, well, why wouldn't we live here? Why wouldn't everybody live here? So artists started moving in, because it was less expensive than Cambridge and, and it's all changed.
Yeah, I know, it's all changed, gentrification.
Here's what Somerville was like. I was walking across before they built the Capuano School and some guy's with his dog and he's crapping on the, on the, on the grass. And I said, you know, could you pick up, my kids play soccer here? And he looks at me, goes, I hate you people. It's like.
Hate is real.
Yeah. You people, first of all, hate. Second of all, who is you people? It's your dog, not me.
Yeah.
So anyway, it was like that. It was, it was interesting, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm so glad. Yeah, Somerville is a hot topic and we could continue talking, but Ben Ewen has arrived, Ben Ewen Kempin has arrived. And so thank you so much for being on the show.
Thanks, it was fun.
And I'd love to have you again.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm gonna.
We're getting cut off. How do you do this?
We don't, actually, it's live.
Oh, you just keep going?
Yeah.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll look you up, we have a lot of Facebook friends in common.
Yeah.
Hi, Alan.
Welcome.
Hi, Somerville.
Friend to be, so I could see.
I will.
Okay.
Perfect, that should work.
Can I drink seltzer on the air?
Yeah. Okay, I think that's good. All right, thank you, Stuart. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Welcome to Live Television. We're at Somerville Media Center. Tim Jackson just left the studio. Joining us now is candidate for Somerville's Ward Three Alderman, Ward Three Alderman, Ben Ben Youn Kempin.
Hello, Somerville.
Hey, so Ben, I imagine you just got off door-to-door community outreach.
That's right.
Talk a little bit about what you're hearing out there in the Somerville and Ward Three.
Well, I have now knocking doors seven days a week.
Yeah.
I actually think that one of the really, really big issues in local politics is low voter turnout. And basically, any issue that you or I or most people care about would benefit from more people being involved. There's currently, in Ward Three, about 17% of the registered voters turn out for local elections, which is compared to about 80% for presidential elections. And I think these people that live here really care about the issues. But it's hard to get involved in local politics, because there's no media that covers it really in depth. I think for folks, especially new folks who show up and want to get a sense of what's going on, who can I trust, what are the big issues? It's genuinely very hard if you don't know somebody.
And it seems too, to be so tight of a time, you know, to really even get to know the candidates very well. I think, you know, what does November 7th fall on? Is that a weekday?
Tuesday.
That's another thing. I think in the future, I'd love to see legislation passed that it's a weekend, or at least maybe Voting Day is a holiday.
Oh, yeah.
And also to have a system set up where people can show up to a spot, whether, like the MBTA, and be bused to their local polling station.
Absolutely, I think it should absolutely be a holiday.
These things should be, help to, I think, usher in the new, the new way that we're going to be voting in the future, which isn't this sort of old way. I'd like to see some improvement and progressiveness on voting. Also, so this is your first time, talk a little bit about what compelled you. You moved here, when, when did you move to Somerville?
So I grew up in Central Square in Cambridge, went to Ring and Latin. And I moved here after college, which was 2008. And I've lived in Union Square, been a renter since then. And I got married in April to my wife, Alex Feinstein, who actually did a radio show here every Monday for five years.
That's right, I thought so. I'm like, why does she listen to this radio?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And no, I did not grow up thinking I was gonna be running for local office. I'm a biologist, and that is, I've kind of set up my life to be doing biology. But this has really kind of captured my passion. And I will say, the decision to run came from the Frit waiver. Yeah, I had sort of, I had started to get more involved, just thinking, well, I'm one of these young people who doesn't do enough on the local level. And I think a lot of people I know who care about politics pay way more attention to national politics than they do to local politics. And I think I was one of them. And as soon as I started getting more involved here, I realized, I sort of always thought that Somerville local government was incredibly progressive. And I think in many issues, they are. But there are a lot of issues that I care very passionately about, that affect me and people I know, that I don't think we're doing enough on. And kind of seeing that in person, up close, it made me realize, I don't know another way besides just getting involved.
Yes, and if you're not talking about, you know, you need to be talking about it to educate others who may not know about it. And for those at home, Federal Realty Investment Trust, they're the developers of Assembly Row, not too far from here. And they were able to get out of allotting 20% housing to low and affordable housing. In fact, not only did they get out of paying 20%, but they ended up only having to pay something very low, 6.2%.
The final compromise was onsite, 6%, and then $10 million into a fund that ostensibly will bring it up to 16%. And I think there was a lot of cynicism about that, because this compromise was introduced 24 hours before the vote, and there was no public comment. So I think whether or not we got the best deal we could get, I think the way that that went down, you know, there were literally probably 300 people at City Hall that night.
Yeah, there were, it was a big, yeah, I saw video, I wasn't able to make it. But, I mean, that's sort of there, just a reflection of how strong of a capitalistic society we live in, where people can do things because they have a lot of money and pull in politics. And unfortunately, yeah, there have been, you know, politicians that have bent over to the developers, because something is involved, some incentive. I see it not only in Somerville, but all around the world. I mean...
Oh, yeah, Somerville is not the only city that is struggling with affordable housing.
No, this is like, this is everywhere. And even what's happening in Somerville, as I was saying to Alderman McWaters and Bill Shelton, who were on the show last week, what's even happening here is so connected to what's happening elsewhere, you know?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's massive, so...
No, and this is a really tough problem. This is not the kind of thing. I think a lot of people think that there are simple solutions that are just sitting out there, and if only we didn't have these corrupt politicians, we could just snatch them out of the air. And I don't think that's true. I think it takes creativity and...
You got that.
Hard work, yeah.
Yes, creativity and hard work. And you're doing that hard work.
Yeah, I've found that I love it.
I see you everywhere, like, you're just this popping up and this, you know, just getting to know.
Yeah.
And do you find that, what's the general consensus around Ward Three and the development that'll soon be happening here, which is really surprising? I went to the US2, sort of meet and greet, it was from Ford to Aid, and I got some video of residents and some architects and to get an understanding. But what do you find to be, to be like the general challenge that everyone is having?
Yeah, I think, I think there are a lot of cities in the world where if you said, we want to do a huge development and we want 20% affordable housing, there would just be unanimous, we don't want that, we don't want that. And I think what is really special about here, legitimately, and I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of people out here, people want development, in a good way, right? Everybody knows, property taxes here are incredibly high, and that is because it's the major source of revenue for the city. If you look at Cambridge, right, that's the opposite, where 75% of their tax base comes from a commercial. And because of that, the property taxes are way lower. And to be fair, Cambridge is not a model of affordability by any means. But I do think that you have a population here that is on board with the idea of building new housing, getting new industry here, getting new green space. But what I think they're really frustrated about is being cut out of the process.
That, yeah, being cut out of the process, because when we're saying that we're really, we're encouraging commercial development, it's commercial development that'll help to bring down the residential taxes, which, as you said, are astronomically high. And it's, they only continue to go higher because of, to afford the school and all these other things that are happening. So yes, to be a part of the process, to curate what kind of commercial development is coming in, let it be smart, because there's dumb commercial development happening every day. And we live in a really dynamic place, it's full of all of these amazing spaces, Artisans' Asylum, Greentown Labs, and like all of these maker spaces and places dedicated to the arts, just a rich, beautiful selection of restaurants and theaters and stuff being built, you know?
And I think one of the big things that I know people are really concerned about is the businesses that are here, many of which are owned by immigrants, which are beloved. You go to Reliable Market, Buck Young, Korean, I mean, these places, everybody loves them. The idea that we're talking about it in terms of revitalization, I think rubs me and a lot of people the wrong way. The idea that the businesses we have here are not vital.
Right.
There's a reason that Union Square is beloved, and it's because of the diversity that we have here and these incredible local businesses.
I agree.
And if you ask the developer, US2, what's the plan to make sure that these businesses land on their feet, I haven't heard an answer to that. And there are lots of community groups here that are doing everything they can to kind of make sure that we try to get answers to those questions before we start kicking them out, right?
Yeah, checks and balances, people need to be held accountable for decisions, instead of just, you know, saying one thing and doing another, there has to be someone just monitoring it, a third party, a fourth, a fifth party, someone outside of their team, you know?
And I do think that this, the folks who live here are not, no one is watching. I think this process has frustrated a lot of people, but there are still very, very committed community people who are gonna stay involved in this and make sure, maybe this is not how they wish that the process had gone thus far, but no one is gonna wash their hands of it and walk away. And now we're trying to form a neighborhood council.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah. And that, there are plenty of growing pains of, but I think it's gonna happen.
I'm really happy.
I really hope that it happens.
Yeah, the name of that council is?
The Union Square Neighborhood Council.
Yes, and I'd love to have on, who is it that's heading that?
It's in the process of being formed.
Of being formed, okay.
And so it's, these are open meetings, they're meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. They meet every other Saturday and every other Wednesday. And it's kind of an amazing process, because they have to create the rules to create themselves in real time. And there are real fundamental disagreements between neighborhood people about what the balance of power should be. But I think it's moving in the right direction. And there's no way besides this, it's tough.
Getting the discussions, the challenges, having opposing point of views, but talking it out instead of yelling, and through that talking, finding like middle grounds and places that we can all come to agree upon, that is beneficial for all, because we don't want to see anyone more just being pushed out or priced out. And, you know, I'd love to live here forever, I'd love to not, you know, have to look elsewhere.